Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Ryska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Mrs. Saroski?
Here.
Mrs. Kosky?
Present.
Mr. Radke?
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Present.
Mr. Yanez?
Here.
Mrs. Yarko?
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Ryska. Counsel, we need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Kosky?
Move to approve the agenda.
Support.
They're moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Let me begin with a few housekeeping items, and then I'll segue into an update on COVID matter. First, in observance of Thanksgiving, city offices will be closed for business on Thursday, the 26th, and Friday, the 27th, which, believe it or not, is already next week. The closures include City Hall and our other facilities. Of course, some of those are going to be closed, and I'll get into that shortly, beginning tomorrow. The city's refuse collection will be delayed one day during the Thanksgiving week. And Thursday's collection will be done on Friday, and Friday's collection will be done on Saturday. And I would like to remind everyone that the yard waste collection, so for those of you vigorously raking leaves, the last week for collection will be December 7th through December 11th. So that's going to sneak up on us quickly. With the winds the last few days, there's not many leaves on the trees, so the next couple of weeks are a good time to get them all collected. And I should remind everyone, the city ordinance does require that leaves be collected from yards or mulch, so please be mindful to get that accomplished. And I always dread talking about this topic, and that is snow emergencies, and that can happen any day now, of course. So I want to remind everyone to sign up for our Snow Emergency Alert System. So you can go onto our website and actually input your name and phone number, your cellphone number, and we will text you and email you whenever there is a snow emergency, so you can get those alerts 24/7. We also do it through traditional means as well, but that really is the best way to stay informed. We have thousands of people now that are on that alert system, so please go to our website. And be reminded that when we are in a snow emergency, you cannot park on the road. We do issue hundreds of tickets every time there is a snow emergency. We don't like to do it, but we have to do it for safe passage of emergency vehicles and snow plows and the like. And I'd also like to remind everyone that although it's somewhat dreadful, sidewalks have to be cleared as well within 24 hours of a snow event, so please be reminded that that has to be accomplished as well. And finally, with respect to snow removal, please be reminded that there is a number of on-demand services now, but the one that we have developed a relationship with and do some cross-promoting is Lawn Guru. So you can go to our website and download their app and get more information about that on-demand service. So you do not have to have a contract with them. You can use them as needed. It's a very good service. I've personally used it regularly, and you can be assured that your job will get done. And the average cost is approximately $40 to $45, depending on the depth of the snow, but it comes in very handy when we have a snowfall. So unfortunately, I have to update you on that. Let's hope we don't need it anytime soon. And I did want to provide an update on COVID-related matters, especially in light of the new order that was just issued by the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. So let me start with showing some stats and how it's impacting Sterling Heights. I haven't shown this data in a while, but I thought it would be appropriate in light of the surge that is underway, for sure. This is the number of COVID cases that we have had in Sterling Heights since we began reporting this data back on April 3rd through last week. We'll have another update this week. But you can see, when it started out early on in March into April, there was a peak around 60 cases a day, and that steadily declined with the stay-at-home order. Through the beginning of the summer, you can see it really leveled off to a low point. And then with the Fourth of July holiday, Labor Day, the cases started going upward, a little leveling off. And then you can see through the month of October into November, there's been a skyrocket effect of cases. So this is mirroring what's going on across the country and across the state. Unfortunately, we're not any different in Sterling Heights. And in fact, unfortunately, Macomb County has one of the highest positivity rates. I just checked it today. Still hovering around 17%, which is really unfortunate. The city of Detroit has a much lower positivity rate, for example, of under 7%. So it's absolutely imperative that we do more to do our part to control the spread of this virus. Looking at this slide, these are just a little different presentation of the data I just showed you. But what I want to focus on here is, again, if you look at the bottom left, the seven-day rolling average of positive cases, no question, this is not only a spike, but clearly, as I mentioned, skyrocketing upward. And it's imperative that we have a leveling off effect. With respect to the death rate in Sterling Heights, when you look at the data in the top right-hand corner, there isn't really much to glean from this in terms of a trending analysis. But unfortunately, we've now had almost 200 deaths, well, certainly over 200 now, since this report's about a week old. So about 4% of all the positive cases in Sterling Heights result in death, unfortunately. So that is the data through November 11th, and we continue to monitor this data and report on it on our website. I wanted to take just a couple of minutes and review just all the things that we have done as a community since the emergency was declared back in March. And unlike the county and state, the emergency declaration by the city is still in place. It has not been rescinded. We do not envision rescinding it anytime soon, especially in light of the data I just showed you. The city developed a very comprehensive reopening plan once the stay-at-home order was rescinded. So that plan is very comprehensive. It's worked very well, protecting those that visit our facilities, such as the city council meeting this evening or City Hall. Those of you who have visited City Hall, you know that it's very stringent. It's very safe. And we haven't had any major outbreaks in City Hall with employees, due in large part to this very comprehensive reopening plan, which, by the way, is posted on our website. All of our employees go through daily electronic screening before they can enter facilities. If they don't pass the screening, they can't enter and must go home and go through a quarantine process and then a testing process. We've had numerous community-wide mask-up PSAs. Some of you may have seen them that have run throughout the city on our cable channel and other mediums. They've run in school districts on their cable channels and also the Keldean Community Foundation. We've had an outbreak in our Keldean community, and we've done all that we can to push out the mask-up PSA. We've also had direct mail PSA mask-up information that's gone to our areas of the community, where we've seen a spike over the summer months and into the fall. Interestingly, we're involved with the Macomb County Public Works Office, testing sewage samples at six locations across the city. And what that data is showing us is that the concentration of COVID is far greater than what's being validated through testing. We're sharing that data with the Macomb County Health Department. There's numerous communities across the state that's participating in this sort of testing, and we're glad to be a part of it. Unfortunately, we've had to work with businesses that were not complying. In some cases, we've had to shut down a business or two, and in some cases, cited others. But in almost all cases, we've had very good cooperation with businesses, complying with the various orders, and we expect that will continue. Nevertheless, we're out meeting with businesses every day where we know there's some problems and making sure that they get into compliance quickly. With respect to businesses, we've been doing all that we can to help them out as well. The city council approved what's called the Sterling Heights Inside Out Program. And what that means is businesses can conduct their business outdoors, on the sidewalk, even in the parking lot, in some cases. We've had a number of businesses take advantage of that, and we're hoping that they'll do so in the winter months as well, with igloos and tents and the like. We've been involved with the county and the Chamber of Commerce, helping to coordinate and assist distributing over $3 million to various businesses to help their efforts as they continue to suffer through this pandemic. And we're going to continue to do that as well over the ensuing months. We've secured an ample supply of PPE, not only for our organization. For example, we have thousands of N95 masks for police and fire. We have hundreds of thousands of surgical masks, thanks in large part to FCA and Ford Motor Company, who have donated thousands of masks to us. So any community groups that feel they need a surgical mask, we're happy to get those distributed to us. You can email me or contact any council members or the mayor, and we'll make sure we get those out to you. We're collaborating with healthcare leaders regularly. We monitor reports daily, and we're doing all that we can to decipher and make sure we have up-to-date information. As you know, we've moved our city council meetings to a safer location right here. Unfortunately, we're going to have to go to Zoom meetings for the next couple of meetings, but we hope to get back to this very safe environment in the community center. We've developed a volunteer corps to assist seniors with their shopping needs and taking their pets to the vet, and so on and so forth. That volunteer corps is still in place, and seniors that need assistance can call the city, and we'll help them get connected. 150 employees now have been provided state-of-the-art equipment to be able to work remotely on a rotating schedule so that we can continue to provide city services and keep our employees safe at the same time. We developed, I believe, a very impressive at-home city services program. So almost any city business you need to have conducted, you can do so online, from your home, or your business, for that matter. In fact, we even conduct inspections. If you have a home inspection, if you're building an addition or so on, or you're a contractor building a new home, we've been able to do inspections virtually to keep things moving along and keep projects moving. So we're not creating any other hardship on businesses, for sure. We monitor our 27 senior living facilities regularly. Our fire departments developed a very good working relationship with the managers of all those facilities. Needless to say, we're also providing emergency services almost daily because of COVID incidents in those facilities. We've coordinated and hosted a number of community-wide testing events, and we helped access, get their event stood up and going on a more regular basis. The mayor and city council have made direct appeals to the community in various forums, emphasizing the precautions that must be followed by businesses and residents to remain safe. We've had numerous video productions and the like, in addition to the PSAs I've mentioned. The city reduced recreational programming, unfortunately, and still we're closing problematic park amenities once again, simply because we're not getting the compliance we need with mask-wearing. The Sterling Heights firefighters, whom are all certified paramedics, have just received approval to begin administering rapid COVID testing to all police and fire personnel. What this means is when we do have exposures in police and fire, we're able to get them tested quickly, within a matter of minutes, instead of those personnel having to quarantine and go through normal testing procedures, which could take days and loss productivity and potentially constraining our ability to provide emergency services. So this is really good news. We just received this clearance today. The city has a health clinic located in City Hall, staffed with a fully certified doctor, nurse, and related support personnel, providing services to city personnel, including COVID-19 testing. So it's one of the reasons, unlike you've heard on the news in other communities, including Warren to our south, where they've had outbreaks in City Hall, thankfully, we have not had those situations in Sterling Heights facilities. The city's preparing for vaccination distribution for first responders and the community at large in conjunction with the state's plan. We've studied the plan very carefully. We'll be collaborating closely with the state health department, and we expect to play a significant role in that process once it moves a little further along. The city has regular meetings with our federal, state, and county officials to make sure that we're covering every possible area with respect to this pandemic. The city provided financial relief to residents that have not been able to pay their water bills due to financial hardship. That program started this summer, and we're still working through some of the final cases there. We've developed a very comprehensive website, so if anyone wants more information, they can go to our website and learn more about everything I've mentioned tonight and some other finer details. Now, in light of the recent order that came out that the governor announced Sunday evening, the city's now taking additional measures to make sure that we're in compliance with that order. So let me just review those quickly. First, of course, essential service departments, including police, fire, and DPW, will continue providing emergency services 24/7, so there's really no change there. In addition, there's really no change at City Hall, although we've had to. We've reduced our in-person employee ranks even further. But City Hall will continue to remain open from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. We're closed from 1:00 to 2:00 for lunch, simply because we don't have enough manpower to cover the lunch hour period. Of course, employees have to have a lunch hour. And then we're open from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. at City Hall. But again, I urge residents so that they can stay safe and we can continue to keep employees safe, to use our at-home services. You can go to sterling-heights.net/athomeservices to see everything that you can do. And as I mentioned, it covers about 95% of every imaginable service. The library will continue to provide curbside and home delivery services. However, the actual library building itself will be closed effective tomorrow. The digital library services are available at shpl.net. The community center and senior center will be closed starting tomorrow until December 8th, and it's likely that will have to be extended, but the current order goes through December 8th. Senior transportation is still available for medical and shopping appointments only. And unfortunately, it's sad to announce that Sterling Christmas will be canceled this year. However, the good news is, the Dodge Park ice rink will open on December 1st with a maximum of 22 skaters at a time. Skate rental will not be available, but we're glad that we're able to at least open up the ice rink. Again, that's December 1st. The nature center will remain open, but it's limited to five visitors at a time. The district court is not open to the public. Most matters are being handled or adjudicated via video conference. You can call the court's number to get more information. And needless to say, face masks are required at all facilities. You must wear them to get in our facilities, or unfortunately, we simply have to turn you away. There are a few exceptions. So that is it in a nutshell for everything going on with respect to the latest order. I did want to mention, publicly speaking, the biggest change is that restaurants no longer can provide restaurant services. They can only provide walk-up or takeout or delivery services. Obviously, there's no bar services. This order, again, goes through December 8th. High schools, colleges, restaurants, they all have to remain closed now. Theaters, stadiums, arenas, bowling centers, indoor ice rinks and indoor water parks, bingo halls, casinos, arcades, and the like are all closed. So there obviously is some community impact as well at large. But Mayor, that is it, and I just have one last item on my report this evening, and that is a request for a closed session. Let me just mention that at the conclusion of tonight's meeting, I'm requesting that the city council convene a closed session pursuant to Section 8H of the Open Meetings Act for council to consult with the city attorney regarding a confidential written legal opinion. And that concludes my report this evening. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda? If not, counsel, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Kosky?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
They're moved and supported. With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is to consider approval of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Sterling Heights and Teamsters Local 214 Department of Public Works Field Unit employees. We have a presentation from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Mayor, I'll be very brief with this because this is now the sixth collective bargaining agreement that the city council's considered over the last few months regarding our funeral leave policies. We're trying to update all of our funeral leave policies with all of our bargaining units. Currently, what we have in place is very dated and simply needs to be updated. So this is the sixth one. The new agreement, like all the others, creates some certainty and very little ambiguity now. There's greater flexibility. There's uniformity now with the new funeral leave policies, and it's a less intrusive process for city employees. So this has been well-received by our employees, and we're respectfully requesting the mayor and city council approve the MOU that's before you this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Not counsel, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Schmidt?
Resolve to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Sterling Heights and Teamsters Local 214 Department of Public Works Field Unit employees and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the memorandum on behalf of the city.
Support.
They're moved and supported. Any discussion?
Mayor, I think this has been covered over and over again, so I'm satisfied with the explanations we've gotten in the past.
Counsel, anyone else? No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is to consider nominations to the city of Sterling Heights boards and commissions. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this item? Not counsel. There are two boards. These were postponed items from a previous meeting. First is the Board of Ordinance Appeals to Alternates, two open positions, council appointments, terms ending June 30, 2023. Is there anyone who'd like to make an appointment? Or nomination, I should say. Not a pass on that, and then we'll go to Zoning Board of Appeals Alternates. Anyone have a nomination?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Yarko?
Let me find the... I want to find... Move to nominate John Fen for consideration as an appointee to the Zoning Board of Appeals alternate at the December 1st, 2020 regular city council meeting. Support.
They're moved and supported. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There's one additional ZBA alternate. Is there any nomination? If not, why don't we postpone this to... Looks like it's the Tuesday, December 1st, city council meeting. So I'd entertain a motion to postpone Board of Ordinance Appeals to alternate positions and the one remaining ZBA alternate position to the Tuesday, December 1st, city council meeting. They're moved. Support. They're moved and supported. With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to consider appointments to the city of Sterling Heights Youth Advisory Board. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this item? If not, counsel, I believe we have one appointment. If not, counsel, I believe we have one appointment. Angelina Toma, who'd like to make that appointment?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Resolve to appoint Angelina Toma to the Youth Advisory Board to a term ending June 30th, 2021, subject to the appointee meeting the qualifications set forth in Charter Subset 4.03, and taking the oath of office within two weeks.
Support.
It was moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
No, I know that she's very interested in this position, and we're happy to have her.
No further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes that portion of our agenda. We'll move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone who would like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? Mr. Jefferson.
Mike, it's three people here, so you can put that down tonight. First question, Mr. Vanderpool, with the COVID going on, and I'm under no pretense, we got 135,000 residents here in Sterling Heights. We've got a big holiday coming up here. What is the... Going to be the police procedure for breaking up people with large gatherings at their homes? That question needs to be asked. I know it's hundreds of questions out there. People, you can't be scared. You've got to be afraid. You have to come down here. Another question, Mr. Vanderpool, can you tell us the breakdown of where people in Sterling Heights are getting the virus? Because I don't think it's under bars, restaurants, shopping centers, or anything like that. I think it's people at home. For example, most of you folks up there on council are married. How many of you sleep at night with a mask on because you sleep in the same bed with your husband? Because with this disease, you don't have to have the disease in order to be a carrier. You can spread it to your wife or your people living in your home. How many of us are walking around with masks inside of our homes? That's a question. Another question, Mr. Vanderpool, is about... We'll change gears here. North Van Dyke, over the last few weeks, there's been quite a bit of conversation going on about old North Van Dyke. I have to ask you a question about the Speedway up there. Several years ago, they came and made a petition for an ordinance change to expand that, that Speedway. What's the process on that? Also, what's happening with the Pinghams up there? That's going on a decade of building that spot. Is there any timeframe for them to finish building it? And if they can't finish building it, can it be turned back over to the city where maybe we can get a better, reputable developer to come in there and maybe take over that spot or do something else with it? And as far as I'm concerned about North Van Dyke, you can tell Riverland Mall gets bought out, torn down, and redeveloped. There's really not much that could be done up there because, like I said before, this is a very old process, a conversation we need to talk about. And as I mentioned yesterday on the Facebook pages, that for all of those of you that have lost your job or been in the job for a while and it's not coming back, we do have the Single Parent Dislocated Home Maker Program that folks should be looking into that's put up by the Community Block Grand Development Program, and that would help maybe get you going into a different direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson.
Good evening, everybody. First and foremost, I know we're not going to be here next week, so I just want to say Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Mr. Mayor, all the council people, city manager, city attorney, Ms. Riska, thank you guys so much for everything that you have done this year. We are very thankful for each and every one of you. Basically, you guys, basically, I can't express how much thankful I am for each and every one of you. The city is one of the greatest cities in America. I'm thankful for this city. I'm thankful for all the diversity that we have in the city. Basically, also, did I want to say, Ms. Schmidt, a few weeks ago, I know you... I wasn't here at the particular meeting. I just want to say thank you. You're going to say why. I'm going to tell you why. You met some... During the council meeting, people were, you know, on the podium saying, you know, the diverse unity group. Some were for it, some, you know, were against it. I just want to say, you know, after what you said really inspired not just me, but basically everyone, what you said. Like when kids, when they're young, they don't care, you know, who they're talking to. They don't care if they're black, they're white, what their religion is, what the color of their skin is, where they came from, who their parents are. They just want to be kids. They just want to have fun. And, you know, I'm a very strong Catholic person, so, I mean, I serve in church. I've studied Catholic theology at a seminary. So, I mean, this is not just... This is true Christianity, and this is how we should live, not just how we are in church, but this is how we should be, like what priests says or what the church says. Take this message and preach it to the people, you know, outside of church. What you said is basically great, and I applaud what you said. Yeah, we don't... I mean, this is how this is how this city should be, and this is how this world should be. This is how we can be a better place by embracing one another, by showing love and compassion to each and every one of us. Like what you... All you guys done. Ms. Riska, I want to just say that thank you so much for the election process of doing all the ballots and organizing everything, making this city, you know, not on the news like a bunch of other cities. We basically did it very, very great and efficient. Mr. Vanderpool, thank you for everything that you have done. City Attorney, camera guy, thank you guys so much. I just want to say thank you also for our heroes, the nurses, all the medical people, the fire department, the police officers, everyone who serves in this city. Happy Thanksgiving to each and every one of you. God bless you. You'll see me a lot more in the, you know, upcoming city council meetings. And I just want to say my prayers are with each and every one of you, each and every one of the citizens of this city, and thank you. Once again, my name is Paul Maney, and I have a pleasure meeting you all. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Paul. We appreciate your comments. Anyone else? Why not?
Hello, Brandy Wright, resident of Sterling Heights. I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention, because the COVID cases are starting to rise, a lot of people in line have been saying that nobody's really taking any donations, clothing donations, things like that. I wanted to bring to the attention... Your attention. There's a program that Shelby, Livonia, Lansing, a lot of other cities in the state use called Simple Recycling. You can go online to Simple Recycling. The city will sign us up for it. The company brings bags and drops them off at the residents' houses, and then every day on your trash day, you put all of your clothing recyclables outside. They pick it up, and the city actually gets a profit off of what we donate. It's not a lot, maybe, you know, $2,000 to $5,000 a year maybe, but that is extra money for the city that could possibly be used for senior services, you know, helping out somewhere. But maybe you can look into doing that since a lot of places aren't really taking clothing right now. And I know clothing waste, just in our country, is four billion pounds of textiles every single year that goes into a dump. So this is something that maybe we can do for our city to earn a little bit of money and keep some stuff out of our landfills. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'll close that portion and move on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpool?
Mayor, just quickly, I can respond to a couple of questions. First, with respect to large-scale gatherings, we try to do our best to enforce that. It's very difficult, and it's hard to legislate common sense. I think most people know that they should not be having large-scale gatherings, and they should be limited to family members only and few others. However, when we do become aware of a large event that is clearly violating the order, we do send our core officers out to speak to a homeowner, and typically, they will understand and try to do what they can to disperse the crowd. So that's been successful in a number of cases. We clearly don't know exactly where individuals are getting COVID from. It's very difficult to pin that down. Contact tracing has been somewhat helpful, but what we know for certain is through science and research now, that mask wearing is clearly effective and vitally important to stopping the spread. So that's priority number one until we can get to the vaccines, which certainly look promising over the next four to six months. With respect to North Van Dyke, the Speedway project is on hold indefinitely. We don't have any new news to share there. The Venenziyo Banquet Center, it's frustrating it's taking so long, but we don't have any legal rights to take the building away from the current owner or pursue legal proceedings to do such. It's taking an inordinate amount of time. Eventually, it will get done. There is work going on there. I drive by there regularly, at least I make a point of doing it once a week. It's a snail's pace, but there is work going on. The Riverland Mall, there's a number of opportunities for redevelopment in North Van Dyke, and that's why we're going through the current process now of updating the long-range development plan. And I did want to mention and make very clear that our next city council meeting on December 1st must be done virtually via Zoom, so we will not be meeting on December 1st in person, and likely, we will have to conduct our December 15th meeting via Zoom as well. So stay tuned for more information, but for sure, the next meeting, and likely, the second meeting in December, will be via Zoom. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool. Mr. Koszybski.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have the one item for tonight.
Counsel, any reports or new business?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you. Just a couple of short things. Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool, you had mentioned about our skating rink being opened and that only 22 skaters will be allowed at a time. Will they be in shifts, or how is that going to be monitored so that people don't abuse, you know, let new people in?
Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselwoman Schmidt, very good question. They will be in shifts, so our park, our rink monitors will make sure that they go out in shifts for, I don't know the exact period of time they'll be allowed to skate, assuming there's another group ready to go. But that's the only way we're really able to do it, and we'll rotate those shifts. And I expect it will be a hardship that we don't have skate rental this year. We're trying to work through that. We don't have any easy solutions right now, but we're trying to work with some skate shops that perhaps we can develop some promotional programs and work out some discounts where residents can buy skates at an affordable price. But we'll do the best we can. It's going to be a little bit of trial and error, but what we know for certain is we can't have more than 22 people out at once.
Okay. Also, I'd like to give a shout out to the DPW and their efforts of their annual food drive, their Christmas food drive. For any residents interested in helping their cause, they're accepting donations at the 18 Mile DPW facility Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. So all non-perishable food is welcome as long as I believe you can send a check through Community Relations. So they're always... Always have a great outpouring from our community, and I'd like to hopefully see that happen for them once again. I'd like to extend my thanks to administration and all the employees during this COVID period. Everyone has gone beyond, you know, expectations of keeping everyone in this community as safe as possible, including themselves. So we're all... We all need to do our part, and I truly appreciate all the employees doing their part. And last but not least, I'd like to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving and stay safe. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Anyone else, counsel? Mrs. Sarowski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So I did want to also mention the DPW. So any extra perishable or non-perishable foods that everybody may have because they're not able to do the large gatherings that they were planning on for Thanksgiving or Christmas, there's your opportunity to donate it to a good cause. So just as Mrs. Schmidt said, please consider our DPW. They do collect quite a lot of food, and this year, more than ever, it's obviously going to be needed for those that are having hardships. And just very briefly, thank you again for everything the city workers have done, and I just want to have everybody know that I'm wishing them. My family also wishes you a very happy Thanksgiving. We are going to be just four of us, first time ever. It's been so tiny in my house, but it is for safety and concern of everybody. So please also, everyone, try to stay as close to... As your family as you can by keeping it small and enjoying each other's company. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sarowski. Counsel, anyone else? Mrs. Arkow.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I just... I want to be brief. Certainly just want to wish everybody Happy Thanksgiving. I know it's going to be different for everyone this year, or it hopefully is going to be, that you're all going to be safe and celebrate single families gathering, so I'm hoping that everybody does that. I'm concerned about the numbers that we have of COVID that are growing in the city, and I can't ask you enough to mask up. It really is something very simple. If you don't have a mask, as Mr. Vanderpool said, we have hundreds of thousands of them that we can give you so that you would have a mask if you know if there's a group. But it's such an easy thing to do, and we're all better off for it, so please mask up. And through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool, is there a chance that we could take donations of skates that may be... I mean, I'm thinking, I have a pair of hockey skates in the basement that I know aren't going to be used, but all they would need is the blades sharpened, and I'm sure there's other households that would have skates if we brought them here and provided... They could be provided to somebody at a reasonable price or give them to, you know, the skates that people have at home, and if we could use this as a drop-off spot where, you know, we could help other people that maybe don't have them, can't afford them. So is that an option for us? Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool.
Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselwoman Arkow, it's a really great idea. I'll meet with our Parks and Rec Director, and we'll explore the logistics, but we'll report back to you and appreciate the good idea.
Nothing further.
Mr. Redkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to wish everyone briefly a very happy Thanksgiving. Like my colleagues have said, this year is going to be different than any other, but we're all pulling together here, and I know that most people in Sterling Heights are doing what they need to do. I ask people to wear their masks, to social distance, and to try to keep celebrations small, and hopefully, we'll have a vaccine and be back to a big party next year. But I know we're all doing the best that we can, and we ask you to do the same. So Happy Thanksgiving and stay safe.
Mrs. Kosky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair to Mr. Vanderpool. We received a letter today, it was in our email, from the Area Agency on Aging 1B in regard to the resolution that we sent to them in regard to the CHOR program. I wonder if you could just let our residents know, our senior residents know exactly what the status is of that?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Counselwoman Kosky, well, first of all, I want to thank the mayor and city council for passing the resolution opposing the almost $100,000, what amounts to cut in the program from the area and agency. So the CHOR program is a program that's been a longstanding program to help seniors and others who are low-income and qualify for grass mowing and snow shoveling, snow removal during the winter months. It's been a popular program and cherished by those that qualify and use it. And we were very concerned about approximately... We have about 100 people in the city of Sterling Heights that qualify for the program and take advantage of it every year, and through this reduction, the program would have had to almost been a... almost been eliminated. We could have really only serviced about 30 people at the most. And thanks again to the city council's effort. We appealed to the county commissioners, and a shout out to County Commissioner Joe Romano, who worked very diligently, and our other county commissioner, Rob Majak, who supported his effort to restore funding for the next year only. So we got a one-year reprieve, and then we're going to work on a Plan B, you know, throughout that year. But so the 100 residents that take advantage of this program right now don't have to worry. Funding's restored in its entirety for the next year, and then we'll keep collaborating with the county to figure out a long-term solution. But thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. And I also would like to wish all the residents a very Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Ms. Kosky. Mr. Yanez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to wish all the residents of Sterling Heights a Happy Thanksgiving. Like my colleague said, it's going to be a different Thanksgiving this year. But I would be amiss if I didn't point out that every holiday season, even before COVID, there are always people who are alone on the holidays. And so please keep a lookout for your neighbors. If you have a neighbor that lives alone, especially a senior, if you have their phone number, you know, pick up the phone and give them a call, and just let them know you're thinking of them. The holidays can be a lonely time for a lot of people, even when we're not under a pandemic. So just something to think about, especially this time of year as we're all missing our families, and we're spending... A lot of people are spending the holidays alone. So again, Happy Thanksgiving to everybody coming up. I hope you have a safe one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Yanez. And last, I'll just echo that. Wish every resident in Sterling Heights Happy Thanksgiving and hope you will stay safe this Thanksgiving and enjoy it with those in your household if you can. Before we leave, I want to give a very special Happy Birthday to my son Hudson Michael at home. Hudson should be watching this. Of course, he loves the city council meetings, as every nine-year-old out there does. Hudson got a lot of good presents this year, one of which was a tennis racket. He's very disappointed, Mr. Vanderpool, in your decision to close the community center. Had you just signed up for tennis lessons or the tennis program on Wednesday nights. But he understands, as I'm sure everybody else does. He said to us, said to my wife, when we told him it was being shut, closed down, he said, "But I have so much more to learn still." So, you know, I know this is tough for everybody, kids included. This is really... There's nothing I liked more growing up. I played every sport you could imagine, and when it was the winter, I'd play basketball. I'd play baseball and track in the spring. I'd play, you know, football, soccer in the fall, and it's really taking a toll, I think, on our kids. And so I just encourage everybody, take this seriously, do your part. Let's get through this, get to this. Hopefully, we've got two great vaccines and maybe more in the works. I'm optimistic that by this time next year, we're going to be looking at this in the rearview mirror, but we all have to do our part. So thank you to everyone out there that is, because, you know, we're not going to send cops out to every single family gathering in Thanksgiving and Christmas and all that. But, you know, I hope we all do our part to help, you know, keep our neighbors safe. And Hudson, Happy Birthday. We'll see you soon. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session.
So moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Ms. Riska, can we please have a roll call vote?
Yes. Mrs. Kosky?
Yes.
Mr. Radke?
Yes.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Sarowski?
Yes.
Mr. Yanez?
Yes.
Mrs. Arco?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries 7-0. We will adjourn into closed session. We will not be returning. Thank you, everyone, for participating, and again, have a very Happy Thanksgiving. Meeting adjourned.